Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Uh, bring this meeting to order. And Bobby, if you would, do roll.
Okay. Lucy?
Here.
Jack?
Yeah.
And Sharp?
Here.
I don't see Michael or...
Jay.
Jay, yeah.
So we don't really have a courtroom, right?
Oh, yeah, we do. We got four of us.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Four out of six.
Who's the...? Oh, yeah, Sharp, sorry. Yeah, I don't see Sharp. Never mind, sorry.
Okay, and then visiting is Matt and Troy and Kirk will not be here tonight. Um, we don't have our December minutes ready for approval. So we'll skip right to citizen comments. Um, our only citizen has left the room. Um, does anyone, any of us want to address anything just as a citizen, not as a member? Okay. Old business, um... Well, I'll tell you what, let's go to get the new business out of the way, and then I kind of like to combine old business and correspondence. Because I have a couple things I'd like to read. Is that all right to skip around?
Here with me.
All right. Do we have any nominations for chairman?
I nominate you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, thank you all. That's very kind. You don't want, nobody else wants to do it, do they?
You've been a great leader.
I figure after maybe fifteen years, I may have it down. So thank you for giving me another shot at it. Um, uh, vice chairman, do we have any, uh, nominations?
I nominate Mr. Erickson.
Well, um, can we nominate somebody else? I've got a really full plate. Uh, is Mike interested? Is Mike around? No, he's not on the line.
Sharp? Sharp, would you like to be vice chair?
No.
Okay. All right, Michael, it is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you might just have to nominate someone who's not here, like often happens.
I mean, it's too bad we don't know who our new, uh, member will be, but that's all right. All right, so Michael's name is on the floor. Um, do I have a second? Or who first did that? Can I make that motion, Matt?
Uh, technically, no.
Okay, someone else.
I'll make the motion. Mike will be the vice, uh, vice chair.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, uh, and nomination for secretary?
Bobby?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sharp.
It made me happy today.
Me too. Aye.
All right, so, um, our slate will remain the same for one more year. Um, and who knows who our next person will be? May, may want to become involved in the hierarchy of the government. Yay. I mean, you know, whatever. Um, okay, now, old business and correspondence, I'm gonna just, to, uh, combine them, because I have correspondence. Fred always writes to me, um, and asks me, he tells me what's on the agenda, and then he will, um, ask me if I have anything for it, and it's a bit of a back and forth. Um, so these are my questions to him and his response, and Bobby, this can be as general as you want it. I, it, I said, "Hi Fred, is there any update on whether the ribbon mill deal went through?" And he replied, "The sales agreement went through, utility billing is now transferred to Ship Daddy." So I don't, Matt, what does that mean legally?
Sorry, you said the sales agreement went through?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if they, well, it means at least, at a minimum, they've completed a sales agreement, so it will be transferred to them, but if they've also transferred the utilities, I'm thinking that it's more than just a sales agreement, that he's saying that they actually completed the transaction.
Okay.
So Ship Daddy has it. That's what I'm assuming.
Okay, um, in, in Fred's, oh, I hope I printed that one out. In Fred's, um... Oh, it's not over there. Okay, uh, a party, this is from Fred. He says, "A party is interested in acquiring Helen Wagner's Beauty Shop on East Main Street. They want to convert it into a residence. I provided a conditional use application and told them to contact Shannon. I have not heard anything more. The applicant is a Tara Dunn of Boiling Springs, and her son would reside there. Uh, I have nothing else at this time other than nomination." Okay, so I replied back on that one and said, "I thought it was decided that the ex H&R Block office would have to go in front of the zoning hearing board to change to residential, but I could be wrong." Uh, Fred replied, "I still maintain that a conditional use is the way to go. You have residential to the left and right of this property and all up and down East Main Street." So why isn't the conditional use application acceptable? And so, Matt, I throw that to you.
I'm, feel like I'm missing something here. Um...
When we did the old H&R Block office, I think the woman's name, who, who was the Salisbury? I don't remember, but I thought we said she had to get a variance. She had to go before the zoning hearing board in order to make the first floor residential.
Okay, this is the one, was this the one in the village district, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Fred thinks, is saying that now he thinks it just needs a conditional use?
Well, I believe he thought that to begin with, even with the other one. Um, I'm sorry that Troy isn't here.
Well, yeah, um, I, I, the, you know, the current ordinance, when we looked at it before, the problem is you can't, you can't put residential on the first floor, uh, because we, there's a restriction from one of the amendments that said you need to keep that first floor commercial. So I'm not sure. Without talking to Fred, I'm not sure what his rationale is.
Right, but then going, you have, we said you'd have to go in front of the zoning hearing board, right?
Well, he, they'd have to try to get a variance, yeah, but I don't know how you would do a conditional use, because you would need some sort of variance, and you're not gonna get it, because it's not a problem with the condition of the land itself.
Um, so...
So without talking to Fred, I'm not sure what his rationale is.
Okay, um, any, anyway, we don't have that in front of us, and in six months, when the new zoning ordinance is passed, will that change?
I'd have to look at the new zoning ordinance again to see. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what the, uh, how we addressed that part under, under, uh...
Right.
Under the new village district.
Why would there have to be, I don't know, I'm just asking the question, why would there have to be a variance for a residential facility that has residential facilities on both sides of it?
The, fair enough, the, and I, forgive me, I don't have it in front of, or old zoning ordinance in front of me, but there was an amendment that said for the village district to protect the first floor commercial, so we weren't losing them. Um, the amendment said that you couldn't change the first floor commercial into a residential unit.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where I, I'm not sure what Fred is saying, that there could be a conditional use issue. I, you know, I'd have to talk to him. I'm not sure what he's...
Okay.
Would this be a, um, single-family, um, residential use?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, uh, used, used for apartments or something? It would be a single-family use?
Well, if her son, if the woman who wants to buy it...
Look, I, I can, uh, try to get ahold of Fred tomorrow and, you know, ask him why he thinks that would work, but...
That'd be great.
If you want, yeah.
I would.
Get clarification, and in case I'm missing something that I'm not realizing, we can at least get clarification.
Cool.
Good idea, that would give us a lot of more information. Um, and I wouldn't necessarily lose, see yet, say, you know, lie on what's gonna happen with the new zoning code, because it has to pass.
Well, right, fair enough, right.
So, um, anyway, okay, that's, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Um, okay, so I asked, "Do we have an active codes enforcement officer?" And if we do, it would be nice to meet him or her. Uh, we do. Uh, her name is Alexis Gerhart. The police clerk is the code officer. She is under the supervision of Chief Kozier. Oh, here's her email. I should have invited her, but I, when I got that email, I was not at home, uh, that I was going to invite the people. So perhaps I'll remember to invite her to the February meeting, just to meet her.
What's Alexis's title, then?
Code officer.
But what else is she doing, you said?
She also is the police clerk.
Okay.
They're separate jobs.
Okay.
They're both part-time.
So she'll be the code enforcement officer.
Code enforcement officer, yes. Uh, Shannon was doing both of those.
Right.
But, um, I think we were so strapped for money in the last year that it was, they're trying to find a way to, uh, cut costs.
Um, yeah.
So, is that, was that, yeah, Jack, you're on, 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 what you call it, is that right?
Call it. I'm on a bunch of what do you call it, so what do you, which one do you...
Borough council. Is that the reasoning?
Uh, yeah, I think the reasoning was, uh, something to the, to the effect of money, and also just to, um, focus Shannon on, um, on the zoning issues, and have somebody who specialized in code enforcement, because there was a concern about, you know, the need for additional code enforcement. And this, this allows, uh, you know, Shannon to focus on what he's very good at, and this new person to focus on the enforcement aspects of it.
Okay. Okay, um... So, um... I, I missed last, this week's, was it last week's, whatever night the work session was for Borough Council, I...
The fifth.
Yeah, so it was last week.
Right.
Um, but I, talking with Scott earlier, there are two applicants. I wanted to know who our new board member was, who our new commission number was, and Scott said there are two applicants, and the administrative committee, uh, will be reviewing the applications and making a recommendation to Borough Council on the twenty-sixth to fill the appointment. So we'll find out who our new member is for February. Um, so that, those were my, my questions for Fred and then his response. Then he also sent me a very nice letter, you know, Jim McNally, uh, resigned, you know, stopped being on the commission. And a very nice handwritten letter, and I just would like to read it to you, because you all were... I got to know him through there. I, I didn't know him before. "Dear Fred, Lucy, and friends of the planning committee, please accept my profound thanks and gratitude for allowing me to serve with all of you for the well-being of our town of Newville. You were right, Fred. It was just like walking into a Norman Rockwell painting. Best to all, your friend Jim McNally. Letter of resignation, November first, 2020." So I, I just wanted to share that with you. Uh, I think Jim added a lot. He served, I don't know how many years, probably at least twenty on planning commission, if not more. Uh, so, I thought that was very, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Yep, um, our other correspondence is the zoning officers. Is there anything else on that old business or correspondence that needs discussion? Yep, okay, um, if you got in your, in my, with your agenda, the, uh, twenty-twenty report from, uh, uh, Shannon, uh, isn't it weird to just have us and not like forty people on the screen, just thinking about that last meeting? Anyway, uh, the month, I'll just read it, so that if anyone goes back to review this meeting on YouTube, they can hear it. "Ladies and gentlemen, the month of December saw the approval of the Ship Daddy LLC entering into an agreement with the Borough of Newville, and occupancy permit was approved. A commercial use and occupancy certificate is required. Ship Daddy has applied for the new U and O, use and occupancy certificate, and their application is in the review process with the building code agency. Now, this is dated December twenty-first." Um, the bulldog, that's, so moving on, the Bulldog Prep Academy, due to COVID restriction, is attempting to temporarily move into the fellowship hall of the Movement Outreach Building located at Two Chestnut Street. They will eventually return to the school. They were approved with the requirement of acquiring a change of use and occupancy with the building code agency. I guess they needed more room. Uh, the property at Twenty-four Shepherd, which is out near the Little League Fields on the, uh, uh, Legion, um, has begun excavation and preparation of the new single-family dwelling. "The Broad Street Convenience Store is slowly moving forward. They have their final electrical from PPNL scheduled for January fourteenth. I don't know if that's installation or inspection, and are in hopes of opening shortly thereafter. A copy of all open land use permits has been submitted for your review." Uh, quite a few of them, they're all open, um, any, uh, any questions? On that? I was really hoping Kirk would be here. Matt, maybe you can answer mine. Why does one need a zoning permit? To replace windows or to, um, what else did I see I thought was porch resurfacing? Um... Some of these things, like, if I didn't read this and know it, I wouldn't get, I would get a zoning permit for it. If I have to repair my front porch, I'm not sure why I would need a zoning permit for it.
Yeah, I don't know, is it, is it zoning, or is it the, um, more of a subdivision permit?
Well...
It shouldn't be, it does say land use. I don't know, that's a good question. I'm not sure why...
And I have the fence and the window.
Yeah.
Yeah, they made me get all my windows before, and then I have one currently getting something done, so...
And that's a zoning?
Mm-hmm, mine's a zoning permit. Because we had to pay thirty-five dollars for it.
Okay.
I don't understand that.
Me neither.
I, it's not changing anything. Um...
Yeah, I mean, I, I always think of land use with subdivision, but I, I'll get clarification. I'm not sure why it should be a zoning permit. I mean...
I've asked for a list of items, and I've never received one, as far as what...
Yeah.
What I needed for, so I just get it when I lose.
I'll double check.
Thanks, Matt. Um, see, that's why if Kirk were here, he would say, "Oh, that's because of blah, blah, blah."
Right.
Blah, blah, and we'd go, "Oh, okay." Anybody else have any questions on the, uh, report? There was another one I saw, but I can't find it right now. Whatever. Well, we gotta talk about something. We can't have a twenty-three-minute meeting. Can't.
That's a thing, a bad, short meeting.
We can, Lucy, we can.
Okay.
We had a two-hour one last time. We're good.
We're good, okay.
Um, the correspondence, if you read the emails from Fred, should they go under correspondence, or are they just informational?
Um, I would say, um, I don't know. Um, I would say informational.
Okay, under new business, because this, the one of the hair salon changing really was just an, an update from him? I don't think it was, we were making any decisions or...
Yeah, I, I put it all under new business.
Okay.
With Fred.
Yeah, I think it's, that was just FYI.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
And any other questions or comments?
For me?
Okay. Um...
Do it.
Everybody have a Happy New Year?
Yes.
Good. Anybody know where I can get a vaccine?
No.
I got mine today. I'm good.
Oh, did you? Oh, good. Where'd you get it?
At work.
Oh, okay, yeah, you, you, that's right, of course, you would qualify, yeah, yeah, no, sorry.
Henry's in Shippensburg should have it on by the end of the month.
Oh, is that right?
Henry's in Shippensburg.
To give out. To anybody.
To anybody, oh, wow.
Well, they should have the one A, one B, though.
Yeah, but there's a lot of the small pharmacies are getting it. If you go one, you can see the map of the small pharmacies, like Big Spring here in Newville.
Yeah, I saw that, okay.
So you just gotta call and get in the waiting list, and that's what she, somebody else did today, so, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I called them early, was it last week or this week, when I heard that I could do it? I, I called immediately.
Yeah.
Uh, because...
Nothing's weird's happened yet. It's been a couple hours. I'm okay.
Well, if anybody's ever gotten a shingles vaccine, which I have, wiped me out for two days completely. And my daughter said, "Well, that's your immune system, mother." I was like, "Okay, it's working. Oh, okay." So, yeah.
COVID, are we gonna do Zoom again next month?
Uh, we'll be Zooming until we're all vaccinated with two vaccinations. I don't, I mean, when we surveyed last month, it was, I believe, at the end of the meeting, I asked the question, because the council room is, uh, safe now for four people? You can't get a lot in there. Um, um, I'm not even, until it's warmer weather, um, the windows can be open and...
Right.
Fans blowing fresh air in and stale air out, I'm not, uh, uh, I'll be Zooming. So I think we'll be Zooming for the next couple of months through the winter months, and, uh, and as I said, wait, once we're all vaccinated and, uh, the death toll goes down, and our hospitals aren't overwhelmed, and, you know, four thousand people a day aren't dying, I, you know, if it's down to two people a day, or five, then I think we can meet again, but I, um, does anyone disagree with that?
Nope, I think that's the right way to go.
Okay, so we'll be Zooming, um, until, for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, yeah, they do have that new smart TV in the Borough Conference Room, uh, and we used it for the last Borough Council meeting. It needs some work, because there's an enormous amount of feedback. Uh, so when you're talking, you're listening to yourself talk, too. It's, it was, it was very hard to get through it. I suspect that's a technical problem that can be addressed, but, um, the maiden voyage was pretty bumpy.
And, and Scott couldn't livestream it, because I went to YouTube to watch it, and I couldn't.
Oh, I didn't know, I didn't even know that, yeah.
I went, I went the next day and started to watch it, and it just echoed and echoed. It was very difficult to watch. I, I didn't, because it was...
Yeah, I mean, eventually they'll get it tuned up, and it'll, it'll work, and it's, it's, as a long-range tool, I guess it's a great idea, but I think you're right, that, uh, until the numbers come down, uh, and everybody's vaccinated, um, I think, I think you're wise to do what you're doing.
Okay, cool. All right, anything else? Anything for the good of the order? Let me, let me steal Scott's, uh, final line.
Well, a motion to adjourn would be good for the order.
Why the second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Half hour meeting, kids, we did it.
Awesome.
See you next month.
See ya. Bye, everyone.
Take care, Lucy. Bye.